All right, I'm gonna open the Board of Selectmen meeting here in the Great Hall for Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. And just to give you a little of the land, we'll, the Board will be opening the meeting here and then we're going to attend a site visit at the Hemlock Lane landfill. We will be there from approximately 5:00 to 5:30, and we will reconvene here at 5:30 to continue the meeting. So-
Do I need a motion, Cody, to do that, or just open it up?
No, you do good.
All right, excellent. We'll see you back at 5:30.
My name is Mike Moran. I'm a senior program manager with TIC Companies. So, I've been working at the landfill since 2007, starting with my previous firm who currently does the monitoring. And then for the last 18 months or so, I've been working with Bob at looking at the landfill repair itself. Just so everyone knows, over the years, what has happened is the drainage swale has, is not functioning properly. That is resulting in stormwater during rain events overtopping the swale and has led to two major areas of erosion. Currently, historically, there's been two other incidences where stormwater has overtopped the swale, led to erosion, and, you know, temporary repairs in the form of riprap have been placed on the side slope. Back in, I want to say, it was the January timeframe, I had an initial meeting with the town to discuss the options. Since that meeting, we had a site walk with Mass DEP in March of 2025. During that site walk, we kind of reviewed the project, discussed the two options in more details, got some more information on what Mass DEP's expectations were to move the project forward and to evaluate which option would be appropriate. Some of that, so some of the information we initially presented back in January relative to the, kind of, the minor repair has, that scope has expanded to include a survey. As we just saw on the site walk, we could see that the swale has settled, so the stormwater can't flow properly to the detention basin, which is one of the root causes of this erosion. The other, it's, the other aspect that Mass DEP brought up is that there's a drainage, a detention stormwater basin that discharges into the swale that the swale was never designed to handle. That is also leading to a lot of sediment being deposited in the swale, which has further eroded the functionality of that stormwater feature. So, you know, the two options are still kind of the same. One of them would be, you know, fix the repairs that need to be done. Instead of just addressing the erosion that we proposed at the time, that now has expanded to also doing tree maintenance to remove the Japanese knotweed, remove the trees from the landfill cap, create access so we can do future maintenance on the landfill cap, and to regrade the drainage swale to allow for proper drainage from the landfill into the basin. It would also look at probably having to do some other stormwater best management practices such as berms and so forth to minimize the amount of stormwater contribution from the highway department parking lot so that the swale is not overloaded with stormwater and that we eliminate sediment from being discharged into the swale itself. I think we have the, did you print that out, Bob? The, the updated presentation?
No.
No. So-
Not printed, but the two biggest updates-
Yeah.
Were, one, the cost went up a little bit to fix. However, handling the Japanese knotweed-
Has decreased.
Now we don't have to get it offsite.
Yeah. So, so essentially, how, what really the biggest update is how the finances work. The finances to do the actual repair have increased significantly. Instead of being maybe $50,000, you know, you're looking at maybe $300,000 to $400,000 to do all the additional work now. To get the survey in, to regrade the swale, deal with all the vegetation and the, so forth. The good news is with reducing the Japanese knotwood management to just doing the treatment that Mass DEP would allow, those costs have gone from $400,000 down to about $50,000. So that larger option now swings from a break even to a potential $100,000 surplus revenue for the, for the town itself. So, and that still increases the footprint for solar. It addresses the long-term fixes relative to this issue from preventing it from happening hopefully again. And you'd have, you know, and will address the landfill access issues for the side slope so you could do further monitoring so that it's not, not overgrown. Just so you're aware, Mass DEP requires that the landfill be mowed twice a year. That side slope hasn't probably been mowed in 10 years. That's why you see all the tree growth, the vegetation just completely taking over that, that slope itself. So that's really the, the big update since our, the Mass DEP meeting since we last met in January.
And if I get-
Yeah.
-bought, health agent, with the repairs that we've done in the past-
Yes.
We can do another Band-Aid and just keep moving from there without, you know, really any problem.
Yeah.
This time, some of the extra costs that wasn't done by the town, that, no, that wasn't, to the best of my knowledge, done by the town was filings with DEP, so they fully knew what was going on. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that was one of the things-
We had to go through the filings, and that's where a cost comes into this project.
Yeah, now, because the previous repairs did not include any notifications to Mass DEP. So you had, you know, these temporary Band-Aids with the riprap, but DEP was never made aware that these repairs happened and what the true nature of the problem was. And now that they are aware of what the problem is, you know, that's why the repair scope for even just to not do the full expanded project, the limited, limited project would expand significantly. They would have to satisfy Mass DEP requirements.
So, Mike, just for full disclosure, Band-Aid cost? If we wanted to kick this down the road again, any ballpark on-
Hold on a second. Let me, I think I, I think I might have the presentation. I initially tried to email Bob on PowerPoint, but it bounced back.
Sure.
So, let me pull up my phone.
And while we're just waiting on that, Cody, how is this funded? Is this funded through the operating budget? Is this funded through capital expense?
I mean, something like this would have to be a capital expenditure. So-
And how is that funded? Over what period of time? Is it all, is the whole, if it's, if it's, if it's option B in the long, the long-term solution, how is that funded in, in one year? Or is it budgeted over a period of time?
You know, if it's option B, you opt for that, you're several years out, like, you know, realistically, before that happens, because you need to get all the permitting, you need to get that in place, you need to, you know, work with Maryland.
Pug on your shoulder, my friend.
Thank you. So-
Go down that way.
You know, you're looking at probably a few years before that happens. And the financial side of it, we would need to dig, once we had more detail, we'd have to dig in with council on what we could do legally, because it's, technically, we would need to appropriate the money. And then we would just be basically, once we got the money back, we would be paying ourselves back ultimately. But we'd have to make that initial appropriation, unless there's some workabout way through like a revolving fund or something. But if we were to award a contract, Mass General Law requires that when we award contracts, that we already have the funds appropriated. So that's where it may get sticky. If you were to go for, you know, the option where we don't bring in revenue in the town just as one funding the, the Band-Aid fix, we would have to appropriate that. You know, it, DEP, I'm not sure what the timeline, DEP, how hard they're gonna push this?
They generally have been very lenient with towns. I mean, they're not pushing it that hard right now. They know that, you know, financially, you know, the town of Halifax has, you know, having that kind of funds available is not just gonna happen overnight. So, they do that. So just the fund, the, the updated repair cost without the, the larger project is $529,150. And that's, you know, additional design cost because we weren't assuming redesigning the whole swale and other features to that, you know. And obviously, some of that is also $70,000 contingency we built in, just because you don't, obviously, at this point, you don't know the full extent of everything.
Then would, did, did you have the Band-Aid number two, Mike?
That is the Band-Aid.
That's the Band-Aid. So what-
Is this the total Band-Aid?
Yeah. Because the re, have, because you're gonna have to regrade that whole swale. And, you know, that's about $150 per linear foot to regrade a swale.
So that, I thought, forgive me if I'm misunderstanding this, I thought before we were looking, you gave us-
About $50,000 before. But the, before, the repair only was gonna address the erosion. It wasn't gonna regrade the whole swale.
Okay.
It wasn't gonna provide access. It wasn't gonna remove all the vegetation.
Okay.
All the invasive vegetation. So-
But I, I, not to cut you off, Bob, but I thought you had told us that the whole project was $300,000 to $400,000. Is that what I, did I mishear you there?
I would have to go back and double check that. I don't think that, I don't, I don't remember that being the case, but I would have to double check that. I know for the cost to do the full project itself, if we did the importation, at that time, we thought it was gonna cost $100,000.
That was, that was option B. That was, that was everything.
Yeah, that was everything.
That was long-term solution.
And that was offsetting the construction cost with the soil revenue.
Yeah.
That cost now, because the maintenance for the, the Japanese knotweed maintenance option, that cost has went from $100,000 to $10,000.
How much?
It went from $100,000 to $10,000, because as, because instead of having to dig all that knotweed off and dispose of it at like a hundred something dollars per ton, you do a chemical, you do three rounds of chemical treatments, and that's, you know, $15,000 per treatment versus hauling all this material up to a New Hampshire landfill to dispose of it.
Okay, so, maybe, can I ask you just something different? Maybe a different way to ask it? I think before, we had two options.
Correct.
There's like a short-term solution, which we're calling the Band-Aid.
Yep.
And then a long-term solution.
Yep.
I understand that the cost of, some of this stuff has gone up from 50 to 300 to 400. And then the maple cost has gone down, or the Japanese thing has gone down from 400 to 50.
Yeah.
About, about right?
Yes.
So what is the total cost of the Band-Aid versus the total cost of the entire current project? The, the long-term solution.
So, I guess, so the long-term, so when we talk about the Band-Aid, are we talking about just filling in the erosion right now and then addressing-
Yeah, yeah, kicking the other stuff down.
So if it was just filling those two erosion areas in-
Yeah.
Just initially, that would probably still be in that $40,000 to $50,000 range.
Okay.
Because those haven't changed. It's just really bringing in material to just fill in the erosion. That doesn't address the swale, which is causing the problem that needs to be regraded.
Right.
That doesn't address the access issues that need to maintain it. That doesn't address removing all the trees or other things that you need to do.
So would there be like a hybrid option? We could do like the short-term solution at 50, and then since the cost of the maple, Japanese thing has gone down.
Japanese knotweed, yeah.
We could lump that in? Is that even a hybrid option? I'm just asking. I don't really know what the pleasure of the Board is. I'm just-
We could look at that and see if that's the case. I mean, I, I don't-
It should be, I mean-
I'm just trying to spitfire it out.
That would address DEP, which would really keep them off us. And then, you know, at least, hope for the best with the report.
Yeah. And then knowing that you have to potentially, you know, knowing that you potentially have to then rebuild the swale and so forth down the road as you look at that.
Does, is there any grant funding, I guess, Cody? I don't know if there's a question for you, but-
I mean, probably not. We're not eligible for most grants.
So I-
And you're the PRP, which also probably limits it further.
Okay.
You know, the, you probably end up doing the Band-Aid, Band-Aid fix, which is basically just more material in there for now, while you work to secure funding for the-
For the longer-term project.
Or, or you start to permit for the, Mike, can you give the Board just a reminder of kind of what that big project is with bringing in the soil and stuff?
Yeah. So that bigger project would be, you know, you're gonna rebuild that-
Regrade.
Regrade the whole landfill and then expand the, kind of, that grade, you know, if you drove back, you're gonna expand that grade through that, like, depression in between the landfill and the water tank.
Right.
And you're gonna just fill all that in with soil.
Right.
That soil will generate, you know, $10 to $12 per ton revenue for a tipping fee. And, and that would allow you to remove all the trees, treat the, treat the Japanese knotweed, rebuild the swale, regrade the side slopes to fix the erosion, you know, repair the detention basin, maybe enlarge it, add some additional BMPs around the parking lot to minimize stormwater from getting, you know, causing the issue in the first place. And that would be, it's about 60,000 to 65,000 yards of clean soil, RCS1 soil, if they call it, that you can do under, you know, you wouldn't even trigger an ACO, but it, it would be the typical process similar to what Maryland's does, where you take less than RCS1 clean soils from different construction projects as a grading material to fill in these areas and regrade the landfill. You would still have to procure some materials such as loam and so forth to, you know, re, you know, it's hard to source loam on, on, from construction projects, but you could redo a lot of the other, you know, typical grading materials that you need to build it up.
So, so Mike, on that $529,000 estimate, does any of that include revenue we could get from that soil? And what, can you ballpark?
There would be none.
What's that?
At that fix, there'd be none.
There'd be none.
It's a larger project.
It's only the larger project where-
Right.
Where that, that, where then you, now you are bringing in soil to re, you know, to grade out the area. And because-
So you really have three, you really have three different options.
We're looking at, yeah, we're looking at the short-term Band-Aid fix, which is about 40 to 50.
Yep.
And that just deals with erosion in the short term, knowing it's gonna continue to happen.
Yep.
You look at doing just the landfill repair to address all the issues that Mass DEP and we have discussed back in March, which would be, you know, providing access to the side slope, the maintenance of the vegetation, regrading the swale, adding some best management practices to help address the sedimentation of the swales and the additional stormwater contribution from the parking lot. That's the 520.
Yeah.
And then you look at the larger project, which is, you know, those repairs plus importing a bunch of soil to build a bigger platform. So you would have, like, where we saw all that storage on top of the landfill cap today with the, you know, so forth is, like, that grade would be carried-
Carried all the way-
All the way over to that, that, you know-
And do we have, again, sorry to cut you off, but do we have a ballpark then of option three, when you factor in the revenue we might get from that soil, would it be close to the price tag on, on number two?
It would be, it would be $10,000 after revenue. It would cost the town $10,000 after all the revenue, you know, with the revenue.
So option three will cost the town of Halifax, you think, $10,000?
Yeah.
To regrade that whole thing?
When, when you do the larger project, yes.
But we have to appropriate the money first.
First, yeah.
So we set aside $530,000 from capital?
No, I mean, how you could do that too is, like, it's 530, you know, but yet, you know, when you go to construction, you're gonna be generating money during construction, because you're gonna have tipping fees coming in every, you know, depending on how you bill your clients.
Sure.
You would need to fund the engineering and the permitting upfront. And then, you know, then you could probably almost be self-sufficient during, you know, somewhat self-sufficient during construction.
Okay.
You know, you'd have to carry a little contingency to get it started, but then once it starts, then you start, then you have the, and, and other things, like, I'm assuming that you'd have to hire a contractor to do that, that the town wouldn't be the ones doing all the grading work. You would, you know, you'd have someone come in and manage the site for you essentially.
And as far as any sort of like water grading or anything like that, or water table stuff, or, we would have to go through regulatory boards like any other project to make sure that we're not messing any sort of water tables up or anything like that?
Yeah. And I mean, and this is just, and this is just filling above the water, you know, filling in the Vado zone. So you're not filling in groundwater. We're not expanding the side slope into the wetlands.
Yeah.
You know, we're just doing maintenance work and then filling in that low spot. And, you know, we've already, we've had discussions with the highway department relative to, I know they use some of that area for staging, you know, to make sure they have carvouts to meet their needs, you know. And then it would also allow you to maybe double your footprint of the solar, solar system.
Right.
So your long-term lease agreement would go up with the solar because you'd have more generation.
That's what I wondered, right? I mean, I monitor the wells, the methane or whatever, and not into the whole finance of it. But I said, well, if you have a bigger solar field, maybe it makes more money.
Make more money.
That was just me thinking.
So Cody, I assume you're the best person to answer this. What would have to be set aside in that option three from capital? I'm just thinking about the things we-
It depends, you know, how it would be laid out. I'd have to see a more detailed plan of how it would work. The, the caveat is we cannot award any contract to do any work without the money appropriate.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is the, is the appropriated money the 530?
It depends how the money comes in, because like Mike was saying, the money would be coming in as we're doing some of the work. But, right, we, we're all, everything, we have to procure everything because municipalities-
So how do we-
We would likely need to come up with a large chunk of that initially.
How do we ascertain that number and whether it's a viable solution, if we're voting on it or making a decision? Are we picking an arbitrary number to, that we say?
No, no, Mike has put together some, you know-
So, and I will say before you make a decision, like, when we have Mass DEP, one of the initial steps we have to do to move the larger project forward is do what they call the mini corrective action alternative analysis. And essentially, that means we have to show them that this project is needed, which, you know, they were on board with, they understood it. But we have to, you know, there is an initial submittal to get them, you know, on board with the larger project.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt the project is needed. I'm just thinking, if money was no object, I think that, you know, it's pretty clear which way we would think to go. I just, I'm hesitant to spend money that might be already allocated or we had that budget lessened just three months ago.
So I think one of the things, the next steps I'd recommend is, you know, have Mike put together a proposal for what, what next steps would cost us, right?
Yeah.
For your firm, or, you know, whatever the next steps are to conduct that analysis, because that's what the town's gonna need to come up with at first, right, is the funding to fund that portion of the piece that would then allow you to move forward with the bigger project. And that would allow us to have the information necessary to, to further figure out how, how we're gonna do this financially. You know, maybe there is a way around this as far as, you know, getting that money in.
One option could be talking, you know, looking at, you know, going to a solar developer and saying, well, here was the initial bid. If this is a larger bid, what would, you know, and solicit bids from solar developers and have them fund the project and look at, you know, okay, this is what it's gonna cost. Your lease would have been this, but there's a, there's this delta that we gotta cover. So instead of maybe having a $30,000 lease, it'll be a $20,000 lease, or, you know, and, and look at maybe working with a solar developer to help, you know, so the town isn't taking on that money.
Right. Yeah, so I think that makes sense. I think, could we ask you, Mike, to put together those, like Cody says, those three different scenarios?
Yeah.
Crunch those numbers and, and kind of get back to us?
We can. And I, I don't know if you still have, I know you originally had a potentially a solar developer on board with this. I don't know if there's been discussions with them since then.
Legally, it gets challenging for towns to, to do kind of what you just explained, because it's our land, and it's our project, and the idea is they're only leasing the land. And, and town meeting only, so any lease over five years, you have to get town meeting authority to lease.
Yeah.
And our town meeting authority was to lease the land for explicit solar use. And so if we're gonna then have the solar company also conduct some work on, technically on our behalf, there could, we need to get legal involved to make sure that's-
You might need to rebuild, you might need to rebid the solar piece. And you might, and that might open you up to more developers, because my understanding was you had one developer. It's a small footprint. It's a tough interconnect, because you have to get out to 106 to get to the three-phase power. There's no three-phase power on Hemlock Lane, which makes it challenging. You know, that's one, that's one of the benefits of expanding it. You can build your inverters and your transformers closer to Route 106 and do the interconnection through Town Hall that way, you know, or, or you go through that access road that's kind of immediately to the west of Town Hall off of 106.
So it might open us up to more interest from developers.
Yeah. And we have good relationships with them. We do a lot of work with Citizens Energy. We're, you know, we, we're happy to, you know, set up a meeting if that would be helpful to, you know, or other developers, if you wanted to gauge interest, you know, to say, okay, we maybe didn't bid on it before. If we did this-
Change the scope.
Change the scope. Would you be interested on this? And then you maybe, you know, write an IRP for the solar, and then, you know, and you put the repair piece into that.
Okay.
Also, just wanna be cognizant, you know, I think there, Bob will tell you, and there's a lot of work, you know, with Maryland's landing, and there's a lot of testing involved with those soils. And, but, you know, there's also a lot of, residents have voiced concerns over that soil. And so, you know, you certainly wanna do a lot of public outreach-
Sure.
-to, to get buy-in for that project, because it is still soils being, you know, removed from another site would be placed on that site.
And that will be something Mass DEP would require.
How many yards of swale?
About 60,000 to 65,000 yards.
And you said that's clean soil?
Clean soils.
RS1?
RCS1, reportable coverage. So it's your residential standards. It's stuff that would be consistent in people's backyards.
Gotcha. Okay. Cool. All right. Do you, any sort of vote needed here, Cody, or just-
No, I think just clear that Mike will put together the, you know, what the cost would be for you to start preparing the larger project.
Yep, I can do that.
Awesome. And thank you for the tour today. It was, it was-
We picked a great day.
We did, yeah.
Good day for a walk.
I thought Cody was kidding when he like, all right, we're gonna walk around and take a tour. But, no, thank you. I appreciate it. And I agree, it's work that needs to be done. And we just gotta try to make the numbers work. And we wanna create a, a healthy and safe environment back there, as economically feasible as we can be here as a town too, so.
And if possible, turn it from a liability into an asset to the best you can. I mean, I'd always, I know revenue's always gonna be challenging for a town, so if you can make it an asset, you know, that, that definitely helps.
Awesome. All right.
I have all the knowledge for, well, all of the documentation since that landfill started and was capped and closed. I just offer any member of the select board-
Okay.
Feel free to come into the office, say, hey, Bob, can I-
Okay.
Just review this so that I have a rough idea of what, when, where, and how, you know, just a piece of, I'm big on educational.
We like that, Bob. That's what we love about you.
I'm sorry. I don't expect you to know landfills. I didn't have a clue.
You're a good resource.
But I know that, I know how to watch the methane. I know how to watch the, the tests on the water. And then we just move forward. So if I could ever be of assistance, happy to help the Board.
I appreciate it, Bob.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I appreciate it. Thanks, guys. All right. We're running a little bit behind here, so we're gonna jump down to the 5:45 section of your agenda. I will entertain a motion that the Board vote to enter into executive session in the Town Administrator's Office pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, for AFL-CIO Local 1700 Halifax Mixed Unit pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, to also discuss the executive assistant to the Board, Town Administrator pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and also to discuss executive session minutes for June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I, myself, am a yes. We will try to be here at 6 o'clock, guys. We're running a little bit late. My guess would be probably closer to 6:10. All right? Try and get back as quick as-
Started.
It is 6:10. We're gonna reconvene the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. If you'll all please stand. We'll start with a salute of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. All right, we'll jump right to your agenda here. I apologize, we're running about 10 minutes late, but we'll start with the 6 o'clock appointment, which is a joint meeting with the Water Commission. I wanna thank members of the Water Commission for being here, our superintendent here. And I will hand it over to Cody if you wanna start our meeting here.
Sure. So the first item, based on the Board's request, was just to discuss water quality. I think you guys saw at town meeting, there's concerns, you know, you see a lot of misinformation on social media. So I think it would be good to just have the Board aware of kind of the projects you guys are working on and what you're doing to address water quality. And I think they may have some questions based on, based on that.
True. If you don't, and Bill, if you don't mind coming up, just 'cause no one will hear you.
I don't know, Richmond Park still, we're still waiting on that. We got guys coming tomorrow for the programming and the engineer again, because that's still not online. And most of the problem is from the, not flushing last year, because we were shut down. That's where all the water quality issues come from. It's all the iron and manganese that's settled out all year.
I do remember at the town meeting, I think Mr. Clark had mentioned that they were gonna do a full flush. Have we been able to do that yet?
Richmond Park down. No. We're lucky we can keep the tank full. People are using a ton of water. The well, why can't wells pumping probably 600,000 gallons a day? That's more than it's ever pumped since I've been here.
And what happens if, if a resident is concerned about the water, the color of the water, just as an example, and they call the water department? What are, what are they told to do? Are they told to run the water?
Things with the what?
Are they told to run the water?
Yeah. If you run the cold water, it usually clears it up.
So doesn't that, doesn't that exacerbate the situation if you're told to run the water, So doesn't that, doesn't that exacerbate the situation if you're told to run the water, to clean the water, but then it's too much use of water? Isn't that?
Not if it's just into your house. Because it's random, sometimes your neighbor might not get it and you might get it. It's just a random thing, we can't predict when that's going to happen. And if it lasts too long, I'll go out and open a hydrant up, run it slow, and usually that clears it up.
Do we have a ballpark, Bill, on when we'll be able to flush?
I'm hoping for September.
September?
Yeah, it depends on how we make out at Richmond Park tomorrow. There's just been issue after issue every time we get on there.
Can you help me understand what's going on at Richmond tomorrow? Because I I got to be honest, I don't know the process.
When we did the upgrades, a lot of the valves were replaced and they're automated now. So we've been finding out there's programming issues where the valve doesn't open all the way, so we can't backwash the filters. Sometimes they're not opening to let the water in. It's just, it's just been a nightmare process since, since probably January, February. Yeah, so once they work that stuff out, we're hoping that we can get it running.
Okay.
I think part of the frustration comes that, um, you know, I think we were told in March that we were going to flush. At the May meeting, we were told that in two or three days we would flush. And it seems like that's just to quell the noise. I know, I know you can't control it necessarily, but when we hear it.
Nobody was told that we were going to flush because we weren't, we weren't ready. We're not ready to flush. We were hoping to flush at the, at the town meeting.
Yeah.
We were hoping to, but we've run into problem after problem. And the engineers sometimes can't make it down and the programmer hooks something up so you can log in remotely and try to program stuff, and that's just been backfiring on us.
I'd have to review the minutes, but I believe at town meeting, there was a discussion and Mr. Clark did offer a timeline of two to three days.
Yep.
And so when the residents hear that, they they're offered hope. I would just suggest that these timelines that keep getting pushed back, if you have no control over the issue, let's just say that out loud. Let's not, let's not, let's not give people false hope and say two to three days. That would be my suggestion.
Back then, it was, we were, we were looking at it, it was supposed to be closed. And we don't know what happened. The programming guy made some mistake, two filters worked fine, the third one doesn't.
Can you walk us through, Bill, somebody gives the water department a call, you know, hey, my water's, you know, discolored or smell or something, whatever it is. Can you walk me through the process of what, what you guys do in the water department when you get a call like that and what the, what the action is?
Jackie gives me the call and we just tell someone to run the cold water. Run the cold water should clear it in ten or fifteen minutes, at the most. It's just a random thing, like we can't predict when it's going to happen.
Right.
Uh, lately, it's been a lot over at um, Highland Circle, I think. I don't know how many people in there get sprinklers hooked up to town water, but someone's using a lot of water because that tank will stay at twenty-nine feet all day long. And the well turns on at thirty.
Do we have a way to go around and and check our our sprinkler systems? I know
I can send someone out.
I mean, is that, is that part of your normal routine? Like, do you go out and check, you know, making sure that people aren't on town water?
See if anybody's using it often. And that's why I changed the uh, restrictions to give us at least a couple of days with no water use, but that doesn't seem to be working either. The well last night ran uh, twenty hours from five o'clock yesterday morning to one o'clock this morning. And it was off from one to four-thirty. So people, they just, as soon as they can, they turn their sprinkles on. Today, it should have been an easy day today, and that's with the water.
Yeah.
Tank was at twenty-eight feet.
And you think, you can't predict completely, but you would tie that to to sprinkler usage and outside water usage?
Oh yeah, because it wasn't like that in uh, February, March, April.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from the board for Bill about um, water concerns here?
Just my own question, this is a personal thing. Does it make sense that if you have like three toilets in your house and only one shows brown water? Is that possible? Have you ever heard of that before?
It could be. I mean, it just depends on what happens when the water comes in. When you turn your water on, if there's, if someone's using water and it stirs up the iron and you turn your water on and you pull it in your house, it could be, you could have pulled it in your house because you flushed the toilet.
Just randomly.
And then you can have a faucet downstairs that's clean or the tub can be cleaned.
So it could, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's why we say just flush it out because it's just in that line to the house from the street.
Got it, okay.
Okay, and then uh, let's see, that was A, and then B here, we have discussion on roles and responsibilities and collective bargaining.
Yeah, so um, just to give some background here, um, we bargained, so the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one fifty E explicitly defines the board selectman as the employer, which would be the bargaining employer for collective bargaining of all unions within the town. Uh, we bargained a new contract for our mixed unit, which consists of our water department employees, facilities employees and two administrative assistants, so that's why it's called a mixed unit. Um, you know, the, one of the provisions that changed in that contract was um, the, the first provision that actually changed in the memorandum, uh, changed overtime pay to paid after forty hours worked in a week. So previously, if you were paid for forty hours or more than a week, meaning if you had, were on vacation for forty hours and then you um, worked eight hours on Saturday, all eight hours were vacation. The provision changed it so you'd have to physically work more than forty hours a week to get overtime. That was agreed to, the board approved that, the union agreed, agreed to it. Shortly after the contract was ratified, um, the union notified us that they um, understood that provision to mean something else. And so we met several times, we had several executive sessions with the board. Um, the board and, you know, meeting with council, uh, advised that they were going to uh, stick with their interpretation um, of the language, which was you had to physically work forty hours a week for overtime. Um, that, that was communicated to the water department. The Water Commission sent a a letter or two stating that they were not happy with that provision. Uh, I think, you know, Jonathan, you were on the board and it was sent to previous board members. Um, but again, we, the, it was, it was contained that we were going to um, sustain that provision in how it was written. Um, recently in May, I was randomly going through payroll. Sometimes I checked to make sure things are being done correctly. And I found that the um, the, the provision was not being followed anymore, that there was um, overtime being paid to the union employees, um, going against what the board of selectmen had negotiated. Um, so I um, you know, told our accounting to put it on hold because it didn't match our contract in place. And then I sent an email notification to Mr. Lindsay, um, asking, you know, if he knew anything about this. At that time, I was informed that there was a grievance issued by the union in September. Um, and Mr. Lindsay granted the grievance to provide the overtime pay um, for hours not physically worked over forty. Um, you know, I I just wanted to bring this up and have a discussion. The commission has been vocal about this um, and they're concerned, but, but you know, there's two issues here. The first is when we bargain a contract, whether it's this contract or any contract, there's a financial um, financial implications, right? So we cost things out. Um, I present that information to the board and that's how you make your decisions on whether to approve contracts or, you know, negotiate one way or another. When we did the financial projections for this contract, that was taken into account, um, not providing that. So we did not budget for, for those provisions. Um, and so the other part of it is, we were very clear in how this was being applied. Um, and Mr. Lindsay totally defied that, um, went against what the board of selectmen had negotiated in good faith um, and also never alerted us to this, which also um, you know, affects other employees. The union membership is made up of more than just water department employees. So with us not knowing it, there was potential that the contract was not equitably applied to all members of the, of the union because we didn't know it existed. Um, so I, it just, we need to have this meeting because it needs to be understood that the Water Commission, you know, while they uh, oversee Mr. Lindsay and Mr. Lindsay oversees the staff, they have no authority with collective bargaining. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one fifty E is very clear. Section one defines that the board of selectmen is the chief executive of the town and the, are the sole employer of the town in regards to collective bargaining. Um, and so I, I, we wanted to have the commission in to discuss this because I think there's been some misunderstanding. Um, and I just think it, it defies the public trust in government, in the board of selectmen. When we've negotiated the contract, the board has negotiated the contract in good faith and then an, an employee does something that goes around that contract when they know that was not the meaning of it and, and then goes one step further and does not let anyone know that that is what is occurring. Um, and I know the board, you know, the, as, you guys are elected officials, you are elected by the people to represent the town and one of those functions is collective bargaining and approving contracts that are consistent with what the town can afford. Um, and, and you were entrusted to do that and your authority was undermined here. Um, in the grievance that was approved, not only approved, but never, no one ever knew anything. It was September. No one said anything to me, to anybody until I found a random payroll that was not complying with this, and that's when I uncovered all of these things.
And when was that, Cody? When did you discover that?
Uh, the end of May, May twenty-fifth, I believe was the date. The grievance was September ninth, I believe Mr. Lindsay granted the grievance.
Okay.
And neither, just to be clear, neither the building department, building and maintenance department, uh, their employees that are covered under the same unit or the two administrative staff, people had any questions or um, examples of when they filed for overtime against the collective bargaining agreement prior to?
There were some questions from building maintenance staff, but again, we, we, I um, was consistent in my message to their director who they had asked the questions of, that we were consistent with our understanding of this, that the board had met and the board was going to stay consistent with, with how we were applying this.
So, so questions and conversations took place between building and maintenance and others, uh, where they did not take place with the water department?
Correct, yeah. With, with all of our departments and we have department head meetings. I meet monthly with department heads. Um, and these are topics that regularly come up. So, you know, you can ask any of the department heads that oversee union staff. You know, we, we don't have, well, I am the HR, right? So HR and collective bargaining comes through me, that's always been very clear and defined. Um, and so these things always come through the town administrator. And particularly if it's collective bargaining, it's something that you, it's your responsibility, the board of selectmen's responsibility and you hire me to, to do the day-to-day things, but it's ultimately your decision. Um, and you need to be aware of it as well as I do, as we are with every other case. If there's a grievance, uh, we know about it and we certainly know if there's going to be a decision from a grievance that is going to impact a contract and the financial implications of the contract. Never mind, it, it, you know, this was, we've been very clear in how this was to be applied. Um, and it was, it was blatantly disregarded.
And I've sat in with contract negotiations, I will say not with water, but with other, with fire, with other agencies. Um, to get back to your total package, financial wise, it's a give and take, right? If, if a, if a union wants something here, then you, you take from here. So it's, it's, um, that's part of the process of coming up with an agreement that both sides like. So I can see your point, Cody, whereas to, you've got an agreement that's agreed on by both sides and then one side, you know, it wouldn't be fair for the town to do that as well, you know, for us to all of a sudden change an agreement because we wanted to. Um, because as you say, both sides get together, agree on the gives and the takes, um, and, and go from there to come up with a full package.
And I think the, the most important picture here is, is not the um, issue of the overtime provision that we're discussing. That, that's the, you know, what, uh, started all this, but the, the point of this meeting is not the issue of, to discuss that, that provision. The point here is, is that, you know, the grievance was filed, granted by a department head even in, in total, um, you know, obligation, it was against what the board of selectmen had been very clear in what you were doing. And, and this employee, um, the water superintendent is supposed to represent, or not represent the town because the board does, but is not, is not a member of the union, right? They're on the management side of things here. Um, and that's, you know, we get that information, so that's the issue here. And, and it undermined your authority in this process. And also, you know, it, it really, I think it's a public trust issue. I think, you know, the public trusts the board to negotiate these contracts and you had an employee here through the Water Commission that undermined that process purposely. Uh, because it was, it was noted to them in the beginning of September to Mr. Lindsay that this is how the board was going to apply this. And when he got the grievance, he granted the grievance, which the bigger issue here is never said a word about it, um, until I pulled up payroll and found it.
So do any of the commissioners or Bill want to, want to speak to this at all?
You don't have a copy of the contract update, will you do?
Uh, I do not.
So Bill, we're not talking about the specifics of the contract.
You know, I get it.
I don't have it here.
I get it. And without getting into too much, you knew it wasn't a good thing for the department.
So it was a financial picture that we looked at? But again, the, the issue, Bill, the issue is.
Either way, I have, I followed the rules. There's a section in there that says sick time, vacation time, personal time, councilor's time, work. That's what it says. If that's not what it means, someone's going to tell me that's not what it means.
We did.
You did?
I have, I have an email to you, actually, that, that I did. And I told you how, you know, you have it, and it was, and how the town was going to apply it. And you undermined that when you got your grievance and you granted the grievance and you, you purposely did not notify.
You were on vacation, nobody telling what to do.
I wasn't on vacation in September.
You were on vacation, I turned it in with payroll. I followed the grievance procedure. It doesn't say I need to talk to anybody. It doesn't say my decision has to be based on what I'm told by others.
I also want to remind the board and the Water Commission and the town as a whole, the water department is a department of the town of Halifax. They are not an independent water district. They are a department of the town and they operate with an elected board of water commissioners, but they operate under the jurisdiction of the town of Halifax. Right? They use all of our departments, they're a department of the town. And I think the way that the water department has been acting is an independent water district. It needs to be very clear, they are not an independent water district. They are a department of the town of Halifax. And there needs to be collaboration, as there is with every other department in town, in communication. And it was very clear how this was to be applied. And so again, I don't, I don't, there's not going to be uh, something, a solution here tonight, but it just needs to be understood, um, and on the record, that this is what occurred. Um, that it undermined the board's authority and trust, um, that the residents entrust in you when they elect you to negotiate contracts on behalf of the town as the exclusive employer of the town under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one fifty E. And that is what has occurred here, um, and just, you know, want to make you aware of that, um, that that, that is what happened.
Bill, can I, can I ask you, when you, when you signed off, um, you did know that the board had that position that it was ours worked, right? Not, not our schedule?
Right, but then that section is, tells you something different. What is that section in the contract?
Well, we met on that section and I told you after that, that we are continuing with that.
You said that before I even got the grievance, because I was paying them because I didn't know. But I didn't know, so I was paying them the overtime and then you said, hey, they're not supposed to get paid overtime unless they work forty hours. They started getting paid overtime, then they filed the grievance, brought it up to me, that, hey, look, there's a section that says all this councilor's hours worked.
So I guess just as a, as a courtesy, do you, do you think where it had been, it had been an issue, a sticking point, I will say. Because you signed off on that grievance, do you think it would have been in the town's best interest to let the town know of, hey, um, this is the grievance that, that I, you know?
I turned it in with payroll in case anybody had any question.
Because it had been a sticking point for a while, so to Cody's point, it does appear like you, you sidestepped the town, you know?
Just follow the grievance procedure. If it's different, let me know.
Bill, did the wa, did you, um, did the water commissioners know at any point about this?
Yeah.
And, and they, did they give their blessing to, to have this process followed?
I showed them the section in the contract, let them know that this is why I did it, and they were okay with it.
Okay, so, and just to be clear, you're an appointed member, you're, you're an appointed water superintendent?
Yep.
Appointed by elected water commissioners?
Yep.
Okay. And the water commissioners, maybe it's a better question for any one of them who's here. Did they feel any obligation to, to disclose what was happening to the people that elected them to their positions? As elected officials? To sidestep a contract, which to be honest, felt sneaky, feels sneaky.
Nobody tried to sidestep anything. Nobody needs to tell us that we know that we're a member of this town. Bill followed the grievance procedure that's written in the contract. The grievance procedure says that if an employee files a grievance, he goes to the superintendent. If the, if the employee is not happy with that, then he comes to us. That's the procedure. There is nowhere else in that contract that says if that grievance is put to bed, that we do anything. We feel that it's put to bed. The board of water commissioners' problem with this whole contract is you people. You negotiate the contract, we're not asking to negotiate anything, we're not asking to sign anything. We're asking you people, before you sign it, to ask us if we agree. Give us, give us a look at it at least. We see nothing. You people signed it and it's a done deal. We, we saw the contract after it was signed and done. I came to a meeting well over a year ago about the same overtime. And then, and when Cody walked into the meeting, he didn't even want to talk to me because I was at the meeting. I'm the chairman of the department. I feel it's my responsibility to try to end this. That's why I'm here, that's why the other commissioner was here, to put this to bed. You just talked about people uh, with dirty water calls. We want people that will come in and help us with these issues when they come up. We got a plant that's coming online that we thought would be back online sometime back in May. There would be more issues, but it does go back online. I'll guarantee you, there's going to be some issues that nobody foresee is coming. We want somebody that will come in and take care of them. The guy's not going to come in. If you tell him, you know, you're going to come in, but you're going to get straight time to do it if we call him at midnight, at two o'clock in the morning or whenever it is. If somebody has a, 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 a leak in their basement, if we need somebody to come in. We want people to come in. Who's going to come in at two o'clock in the morning for, for, and do something and just say, by the way, you're going to get straight time to do this? This is a very simple thing to fix. All we're asking is when, when the guys come in, they're going to get paid, period. And we want to see the contract the next time you do it before you sign it. I don't think that's asking for too much. You guys, you just admitted you don't know what's going on in those plants. A lot of us still don't, even because it's, it's all brand new. I bet none of you have even been in the plant.
No, but I will, I will say, I'm not a water commissioner.
You're not? Have you been in the buildings? You know what it takes to, to run this thing?
No, no.
That's not our purview.
That's.
But it's us.
Correct.
But we, that's what we're saying.
And water is the biggest issue in town for the last twelve years, no question. And now it's, there's a sneaky provision that you folks sidestepped the rule. Other departments didn't have the same questions and did follow the rules.
We followed the rule, we read the contract.
Okay.
He's got a copy of it. The contract says the employee files agreements, he files it with the superintendent. If he's not happy with that, he brings it to us.
Okay, so to be clear, you approved it.
He was happy.
You approved the process.
Bill said he took care of the grievance.
So you have no regrets about how this all unfolded, you're?
No.
Okay.
Because we followed the contract.
Okay.
Simple.
And just to, not to beat a dead horse here, but Cody, when the, when the negotiations were happening, the union people did have a copy of the contract that they were able to review, that they were able to see and that, uh, I believe this change was the first line in the contract? So to say that, that you guys didn't get a look at it, I, I mean, it was.
We didn't get a look at it, they did.
Right.
Right, that, that's accurate, so that, that's absolutely accurate. Um, but again, we're not here to discuss this or the specific, we're here discussing the process that occurred and undermined the authority of the board's selectmen. Um, and, and Mr. Clark is accurate, you know, they requested a meeting over this topic. Um, I walked in, I had no clue that he was going to be there because he doesn't represent, the town is the employer under collective bargaining. Um, and I ended the meeting when Mr. Clark started swearing at me. Um, and I did say I was done with the meeting because he, he started dropping uh, explicit language at me, which was uncomfortable and unnecessary.
We'll back that up. Everybody who's here who's at that meeting, does anybody remember me swearing at him?
Well, I, I.
You're saying no, but you're saying yes.
I do recall. I do recall.
Somebody's not telling the truth.
Okay. All right, to steer this back, I do feel like we need to work a little bit more in conjunction if we can figure this out. Because I will say, and I don't know if I'm perceiving this myself, and I don't know if the board picks up on this, but I feel like there's a disconnect between the town and the Water Department. Whether, you know, who that falls on, so be it. But I think we need to, Cody's point, come up with a way where we can collectively work together to work on problems and issues. And I hope that the Water Department is okay with something like that.
Absolutely.
Any other comments from the board? Yeah, in the blue first, Chris, rock, paper, scissors, however you want to do it.
Chris Winoch, 129 Circuit Street. I had a question on the first subject, because we jumped right to the second one. When we finally go to flush the wells, will we be doing every single hydrant in town?
Do you guys hear that one? If you guys want to just come up and answer, just, Bill, because no one will hear it.
Yeah, it'll be all the hydrants. When we can flush, if we can flush in September, we're going to get all the hydrants because everything's been sitting for over a year. So we have to do a complete flush to make sure everything's out, start fresh.
Because of this pickle we're in, would you guys say you've received a record number of calls? Just because of the state of what's going on right now?
I think so. I think it's the most since I've been here, yeah.
Okay.
But we know why. Before I got here, we didn't know why, but now we know we didn't flush it all last year. And taking Brockton's water didn't help.
Okay.
Because we spent a lot of money just taking their water to use it, never mind flushing out the hydrants.
All right, thank you. In the blue, did you still have a question? Oh, you got a follow-up, Chris?
I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't all lines. Will every hydrant be opened and flushed?
Every hydrant? Yep, Bill says yep.
Hi, my name's John Roberts. I'm the Ask Me Council 93 staff rep. And I was the one that was part and parcel with another member of my unit to negotiate this contract. The language that was put forward in that contract was put forward three times and rejected. And yes, it did get through. We brought it to the attention as soon as the contract happened. And I'm here basically on behalf of that to set the record straight. So this has been an ongoing two-year issue, in that the Water Commissioners, and I'm speaking on behalf of them, for them, they tried to reach out to the board, as my understanding, numerous times, and were not given the opportunity to meet for two years. Now that the contract was followed to the T, when it was filed under 150E in the DLR, it split the responsibilities of the grievance procedure on purpose. So the Water Commissioners had a say in the Water Department, and the town had a say for the town employees. And that's how it's written, and they followed it to the T. And now that it's an issue, the town feels, now they want to talk to the Water Commissioners. So we followed the contract by what it stated, and the remedy is what it is. And that's all I have to say.
Do you know when the contract, or maybe Cody does, when was that contract?
Next year.
When was it?
Twenty-three.
So ratified in June of twenty-three.
And you're saying since that contract was signed, there's been multiple attempts by the Commissioners to appear before-
Multiple attempts by the union to correct, and what we feel-
And we met with you, John.
Well, I'm speaking, Cody.
Okay, thank you.
I have the microphone.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, you only have a couple of weeks to go.
Okay, thank you. I still care about the town.
I do too. I do too. I'm not here to break the bank, okay? I'm just here to state the facts of what happened. We reached out multiple times to correct what we thought was an injustice. Cody got a bad memory and said he doesn't remember any of it. Okay, no problem. We offered to try and correct it by offering up solutions. We were met with complete silence. Nope, not interested. Okay, we were going to wait for three years. We filed the grievance when we found out, the Water Commission, and we did the process, and that was the remedy.
Can I ask a follow-up? So, I mean, I'm new to the board a year ago, May, so you're saying you've tried multiple times in the last two years?
Two years.
But none in the last 15 months since I've been here? Because it's never come across us, my desk, to meet since May of 2024?
Fifteen months, I would say yes.
Say it again?
I would say yes. Within 15 months, we've tried.
And how would that have gotten to us?
It did, through an executive session, which is when we responded to the union. So just to clarify a few things. The Commission did reach out to the board to request to meet. We shared that with the board. The board at the time decided that there was no need to meet because the Commission did not have the authority to bargain contracts. To the contrary, the union did reach out and request to meet a few times. We met. We met several times. We went back and forth. We didn't agree, right, on the solution, but we did meet.
Yes, I can admit to that.
And we did meet, and then we got another request to meet.
And then we found the provision in the contract that said all time counts as time worked. We brought that to your attention and was told no. So the first time that happened, we filed the grievance with the Water Commissioners.
No, the Water Superintendent.
Those Water Superintendents, stand corrected. And the remedy was what it was. We followed the contract. Once we found that provision, that's when we said, okay, you're not going to agree with us on this way. We found this provision, you still don't agree, but we're going to file a grievance on it. And it ended there because it was approved. And now the time counts.
The issue here is not-
That's within the contract. That language is in the contract.
Right. The issue here is not with the union, John. That's not what the board here is discussing. Tonight, we're discussing the issue of the grievance procedure in the blatant disregard to inform the town. That has nothing to do with the union. We're not talking about that.
I understand that. I just felt the need to make the record straight of what was being said.
So we did meet. Every time the union requested to meet, we met. I brought it before the board.
You did.
The board met in August, when the union brought forward the language that they found. And in conjunction with our recommendation from council, the board made it very clear that they were sticking with the current understanding of it. And on August 13th, I sent an email to Mr. Roberts and the union president, Mr. Hathaway, and I informed them of that decision. And shortly afterwards, when they, you know, as he said, they filed the grievance.
And then I believe it was Labor Day, you can correct me on, was the first holiday that happened. The person worked, we didn't get paid, we filed the grievance, and it was, the remedy was yes, that they should be paid. And that's where we stand today.
I think going forward, I appreciate the account. I appreciate that, John.
Everybody good?
And I appreciate the recount. I just think going forward, we need to come up with a way. I don't think the town should learn about grievances, you know, nine months after the fact. You know, I do feel like, just in the spirit of good faith in the town, we should be given a heads up as to the grievance was signed, especially again, where this was a sticking point. It wasn't, you know, the Water Department knew full well that this was an issue, this has been a back and forth. So if we can come up with a way that we're not blindsided and only find out about this grievance through a random payroll check, that to me seems a little bit underhanded, I will say. So if we can come up with a way to have both sides talking and improve communication, whether that's updates from Bill at department head meetings, or however we want to set this up, just so that we feel like there's a better improvement in communication, so that we can feel like we're on the same team here. That's what I'd love to do.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely, Dick. Go ahead.
You just made the reference that we did something underhanded. Would you please show me in the contract where that is? Because as far as I'm concerned, we followed the contract. The grievance went to the superintendent. He notified us about it. He told us the grievance was all set. It was done. It was a done deal.
Sure.
What else are we supposed to do? Where in the contract does it say that we have to tell you or anybody else?
Just common courtesy, I was thinking, Dick.
You guys wrote the contract.
Say again?
You guys signed the contract. You know what was into it more than we do. Where does it say that we go beyond that? Tell me what we did wrong.
I just think it would be common courtesy, Dick, to let the town know that this grievance happened. That, you know, you're the Town of Halifax Water Department. We're all, I like to think of us as a family, so I would like to have communication.
Every time there's a grievance, you tell the townspeople, because I've never heard of one.
No, they notify the town administrator so that we know, so that we, so that, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Wait a minute, I don't interrupt you people.
Okay, go ahead, Dick.
If that's what you wanted, why didn't you write it in the contract? It was written in the contract, it goes to him. If it's in the contract, we're going to follow it. You didn't put that in the contract, so don't blame us for it.
No, no, I was just hoping for a-
You are blaming us. You said we did something underhanded.
I would just hope, as a common courtesy, you would let us know, especially where this had been such an issue. I know we're going to negotiate next year. We'll look to add that, that you officially let the town know.
When the first contract was negotiated, I was invited to every single meeting. This time, I'm thrown out.
That's true.
The town administrator, that is true.
That is true, absolutely.
But the other town administrator, the one that was here for 20-something years, used to email or call me himself, tell me that we have a negotiation this particular day. I want you or somebody from the Commission there. This time, we're left blind. We don't find out a damn thing until it's too late. We can't do anything about it. And all we're asking for you to do is let us look at it, give us some place to initial it or something, say, yeah, we approve with this. I don't think that's asking for much. They work for us.
No, they do not actually. Mr. Lindsay-
Now you're getting technical.
No, I'm following Massachusetts General Law. So Mr. Lindsay reports to you, an appointed, as Massachusetts General Law, the other employees do not work. For the Town of Halifax, which is governed by the chief executive, which is the Board of Selectmen.
They work for the Water Commissioners, all of them do. You know they do.
Again, I don't want to beat a dead horse here.
I don't either. But I just want to make sure that these guys are going to get what they deserve. They get called in, I want to see that they get paid, so that they came in. We're not going to be spinning our wheels if somebody needs us, saying, now we're going to find somebody else to come in because he worked all week? And if a guy takes a vacation day, we call him, commit on the weekend, he's not going to get paid?
No, they get paid. Everyone gets paid. We have to pay people.
They get paid straight time. Who's going to come in for straight time today? These guys don't make that much money now. That's why you have to town employees leave this town. Now you're going to ask them to come in for straight time? Saturday, a lot of things happen on a Saturday. I'm going to, you're going to ask them to come in for straight time? Who's going to come in? Just pay them the time and a half, like they've been supposed to get. It's not hard.
Anybody else on the board have anything? Okay. Well, I know this got a little hostile, but I want to appreciate, I want to thank the Commissioners for coming in and Bill coming in, just so we can hash through this thing. And I know we'll be looking to get a contract that both sides can agree on in the next contract negotiation cycle. The appropriate people by Massachusetts General Law will get to see it. I don't know, we're following Mass General Law, Dick, as best we can, so. All right, thank you, guys.
John, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill. Go ahead.
I've had a lot of conversations with you about it. And I was in the negotiations, and I explained to Cody during negotiations why that wasn't fair to my guys. We're the only department that has to work seven days a week. Holidays, they lose out. The highway guys, it's not in their contract. For some reason, Cody listened to Steve when Steve said he needs his guys to come in and plow. They didn't put it in their contract. I told him in the beginning, it's not fair. We've got to be here every single day. He said, well, if they don't accept it, it's not a big deal. All of a sudden, the contract's signed, I kept it in there, I kept it in there, I kept it in there. Wouldn't change it, and then when they said they misunderstood something, that's why they agreed to it. And I said to them, what they misunderstand? He says, I don't know. It's like, shouldn't you find out what they misunderstood before they sign a contract? Next thing you know, it's in there. And I had the discussions we do a lot of times about it. This could have been avoided if he took my advice as a department head and didn't put that in the contract. We wouldn't be here today. They're the only, three guys got to work every single day. DEP says the wells have to be checked every day. You say town hall's closed, they still got to show up. Snowstorm, they still got to show up. Holidays, they still got to be here. Saturday, Sunday.
And again, I'll take that point, Bill, but again, where you knew this was a big sticking point, I just think it would have been decent to let us know that this grievance had been filed, that it had been done.
I'm pretty sure if he looks at his vacation time, he was on vacation that week.
I wasn't, I actually just looked.
Did you? And you weren't?
Nope, I wasn't. I went away on the last week of September. And just as a note, the board's aware of this, but when I go away, I send an email to all the department heads and the board, and I let them know that they can always still contact me and they can let me know of things. Because I bring my laptop and I work every day usually while I'm on vacation. So that's not a good excuse, unfortunately.
So just if we can come up with a way to check communication-
All we got to do is just listen to the department head who knows what the department needs, and this could have been avoided. You know, I mean, it was all done just for one department who didn't like his guy working overtime after using sick time, and then that guy ended up quitting anyways. So look where we are now. And he's the same guy to complain to Cody, that's why he checked the payroll. You know, I mean, I don't know.
We can try next time.
Yep. All right, thank you. Can we? Go ahead.
I just want you to make it clear, we've only got three guys. We have to have somebody come in 365 days a year. That's hard to do when you've only got three. So when you've only got three, and if one of them won't come in because he's not going to get the time and a half to do the job, that even makes it harder. Not only that, you know, all of our trucks, we put plows on our trucks. We don't need plows on them. We put plows on them so we can work with the highway department in the winter. So now you're asking them not, that cuts down on the highway department. Now they're not going to have anybody to plow snow. And as far as, you know, and we reached out to you guys multiple times. We sent individuals to the whole board. We sent individual emails to the three selectmen at the time. I don't think you two were there. But we tried. We get no answers. So we know this is a sticking point. We've known of it since they signed the contract. And we've been trying to get it fixed. That's all.
Thank you. All right, guys, we're running a little late. I apologize. And I know we have approval of warrants and commitments, but we have some folks waiting here. So if you guys don't mind, we'll take the agenda a little bit out of order. We'll go down to letter B on your agenda. Dave Walsh is here with the proposed Veterans Memorial. Dave, or if we don't mind, taking the mic? Yeah, thank you.
I wanted to give you just a little briefing sheet.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, Dave, just go into the microphone so folks can hear you, yeah, and identify yourself.
Okay, good evening, gentlemen. My name is David Walsh. And I'll be reading from this primarily, and I'll be adding to it a little bit.
Sure.
I'm representing the Veterans Foreign Wars Post 6258 in Halifax here. It's our own post. I'm here to seek your blessing, gentlemen, for a memorial for a fallen war hero to be placed in town property. I appeared some time ago, years ago, before this board, and I was requesting us to become a Purple Heart Town. And the gentleman that was assisting me ironically was the man we're talking about now, the fallen hero, Joshua. To many of us, he was like a young brother we never had. He was a decorated war hero. If you look at his 214, started off with a Bronze Star with a V for valor and several, he got multiples on that. Presidential unit citation went on and on. And he was a heroine life, anyone that gave up his life to save two children, to me is a heroine life. And I think he's something we can look up to. Our post, with the assistance of the Council of Aging, has appointed a group tasked to oversee this memorial. This group consists of myself, William Finn, who is a master for financial purposes, David McPhillips, who's a veterans agent in Pembroke. He's had vast experience in erecting memorials, him being a Gold Star dad himself. And of course, our Steve Littlefield, our own veterans agent in this town. We would like to place a polished granite stone bench seat in the back, out beside the memorial that exists on our side lawn. That's what we're hoping for. The seat would be four feet long, two feet wide, four inches thick. It's polished granite. It would be the bottom and the top, both would be the same dimensions. And inscribed on it would be Joshua Aaron Curtis. In 1986, 2025, Hero in War, or Hero in Combat, Hero in Life. Because I think he's shown those traits in both parts of his life. Thirty-eight years old is too young to succumb to something like that. When he's gone through combat and then to lose his life doing this. But that is truly a man who would give up his life if someone else could live. He's truly a hero, in my opinion. The approximate cost is $5,100. None of this will come to the town. It'll be paid fully through the Veterans Foreign Wars with the help of the Council on Aging. So therefore, I'm going to emphasize that once more, there'll be no expense to the town. This memorial will be purchased through Swenson Stoneworks in Washington Street in Hanover. If we get your blessing, we'll go ahead and order that. It'll take between eight to nine weeks to achieve this. The inscription on the polished granite is the part that would take the most. They have their own truck with a winch, a whole cable, they can deliver. And I'm under the impression that they will actually provide a footing. I think I asked in here, we request the highway department to provide a footing for us. We may not need that even.
Okay.
And I think, I think if I read it in the, in the correct sequence, they will provide the footing also. We envision dedication to be, to, to occur on Memorial Day, on Memorial Day, I'm sorry, on Veterans Day, because Memorial Day is not a time to party. Memorial Day is the time to reflect. Veterans Day, yes, you can let loose and enjoy all veterans. So we will, we will like to have dedication on Veterans Day and have the widow, Mrs. Curtis, and her son Owen, who was one of the ones that was saved by, by his dad, do the dedication. And of course, I'm, I'm primarily premature in this, assuming that maybe, if in fact we get your blessing, we certainly would love the presence of the three selectmen to, to be in that, in attendance. And we're thinking to maybe getting our state reps and senators also, and maybe the state commanders, to ask them if they would come, and I think they would. This is something really special. We believe, we believe this memorial will serve as an inspiration for all our citizens and for decades to come. And then I just put down, God bless Joshua Aaron Curtis. Personally, I take a little thing in this, I headed up the committee because I thought he was like a little brother to myself. He's assisted me in many things at home and vice versa. He was a master craftsman. He helped restore the, many of, many of our homes and many of our special places. And God bless America. Thank you for allowing me to come before you for this request. So I'm going to ask if you would give me the blessing to start this project this evening? If that's the case, we will, at a later date, update you on the progress and ask for your further blessing for completion of this.
Sure.
So would I get it now, or would I wait for you later to give me a blessing at a later date?
No, I think.
I think you're okay.
I think we can do this now, absolutely. Well, I want to thank you, Dave, for, for your legwork on this. I, I met Josh once, I got to say, but instantly when you met the guy, you knew he was an impressive guy. He just had a way about him, an energy to him, just an impressive guy. And then, and then when I went to the services, I read the account of how he earned his medals.
Yes.
And it's right out of a movie, running out into open fire to save injured people. His bone, it was chilling. It was a chilling account.
He was a Sergeant First Class, is what he ended up in his enlisted career, which is very admirable.
Yep.
But he, so he was involved in many things in the town, including coaching sports, youth sports.
Yeah, I know he was going to be a football coach, yeah.
And he prepared many things like this for us also. I think he's a very worthy candidate.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. Does the board have anything else they want to add?
I knew Josh personally. He was a great guy. I mean, this is a fantastic tribute to him. He was so soft spoken. I mean, he, I was devastated when I knew what happened.
He was. He was an assuming gentleman, and he, he just took the bull by the horns and did it himself. And I've never seen a master craftsman such as him, because many of my friends went through a place called North Bennett Industrial School.
In the North End, yeah.
He knew some of the folks that went through there, and I introduced him to him. And that was really totally awesome on my part. It just gave me such a great feeling to be a friend of his, and then to see this happen, totally unexpected.
Yeah, and I just, I'd like to add, you know, I knew Josh a little bit. We coached T-ball together. Our sons are the same age. And I've said this before, but you know, when I was running for selectmen, there was a lot of back and forth on social media, which is always fun. And Josh asked the most pointed questions, the ones that I thought encapsulated, encapsulated the vision for Halifax and the love of Halifax that he shared, that we shared. And I think his vision for the town was something that he was invested in, and he was the kind of guy that would work toward that vision, not just hope somebody else did it. And he always asked the most important questions, the toughest ones, but the ones that mattered to me. I had a great respect for him. It was devastated, as, as we all were. And I think you're doing great work for Josh, and I'm sure, I'm sure he'd be proud.
In my military career, sometimes I, I have been a commander, I've been an executive officer. I wish I had a staff, I wish I had an adjutant of Josh's capability that could staff it out for me and present it in layman's terms and make it simplified and, and make my decision very easy. But, so I guess I have your permission, gentlemen?
Absolutely. Well, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the initial stages of a memorial honoring Josh Curtis.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Dave, good luck. I do ask you, before you put anything into the ground though, if you could maybe just give us a, you know, stake out a spot as to where, where it's going to go so we can take a look at it.
Once this progresses, we'll, we'll come before you again with all the specifics.
Sure.
And ask for your permission for the completion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Dave. All right, next up, we have Bob Hodge for possible appointment into the Beautification Committee. Bob, do you mind coming up to the microphone really quick? So Bob, I know you're a well-known guy here in town. I guess the easy question is, why do you want to be on beautification?
I enjoy planups, and I had people ask me if I'd consider it, and I came to the activity we had last month. And I was very impressed with all the people that helped out.
It's a great group.
I thought I'd be able to contribute.
Awesome. Thank you. And we give them a thumbs up, beautification? A lot of thumbs up over there, okay. Outstanding. This is a layup, in my opinion, for what Bob does for this town, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Bob Hodge to the Beautification Committee. Do we know the end date on that one, Cody? June, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Bob, thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you, Bob. Sorry, we're running a little behind. All right, next up, we'll jump down to D, Tyler Hughes, Eagle Scout Project. Come on up, Ty. Right to here, you're just going to identify yourself in the microphone there?
Hi, I'm Tyler Hughes, Troop Thirty-nine.
Yep, and explain to us what you'd like to do here. Why are you here in front of the Board of Selectmen tonight?
I'd like to start my Eagle project. It's two flower beds for the Vaughn Park and the Police Department sign. I'd just like to redo that whole area.
Okay. And you plan on completely, Ty, are you redoing them completely, like stripping them down and completely rebuilding them, or just kind of touching them up?
Completely rebuilding them.
Okay. And do you know what kind of materials you're going to use? Are you going to use wood or trex, or what kind of stuff?
We're still debating that right now.
Okay.
We will figure that out soon.
Okay. If we can, maybe look towards something that's less maintenance?
Yeah.
You know, I know we talked about this with scouts. We have some amazing Eagle Scout projects in town, but sometimes what happens is it'll create some, some maintenance for the town, right? So if you can kind of keep that in the back of your mind as to when you're doing it, something that will last and maybe not have to be painted every couple of years or, or worked on, something that'll be easy to sustain going forward, that'd be great.
Yep.
Does the board have any questions for Tyler at all, or any thoughts?
Just the flower beds.
And what's your timeline on this, Tyler?
We're hoping to be done by September.
September, all right. Have you fundraised yet? This is your chance to start, you know, throwing it out there. Anybody wants to help Tyler? Haven't begun yet?
Not yet. I've still got to do the paperwork for that.
If somebody were to want to contribute to your project, how, how could they do that?
Probably a GoFundMe online.
You're going to start a GoFundMe?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. All right, any, anything else from the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve the Eagle Scout Project for Tyler Hughes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. Tyler, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for helping us out. All right, Council on Aging, do we have somebody here for the live permit? No?
No, no. So this, this is an annual thing. The COA looks to have Matt York over here at the Town Green.
Okay.
That's for, it's thirty to fifty people usually.
Yep, I remember it.
Matt's, he does twelve to one. They park over here in the town hall parking lot. The COA V M will pick up individuals as needed, and this is on July second.
Yep, and it's been okayed by Fire, Police, and Border Health.
Yes.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the live entertainment permit for the Halifax COA for July second, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Passes unanimously. Oh, next up, we have Use of Town Green, Council on Aging.
So that's for the same event.
Same event. And again, it's been okayed by all the necessary parties that be. So I'll entertain a motion for the same event for Council on Aging for July second, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All right, Halifax fireworks. Let me pull that one up. Exciting times, we have the fireworks coming up, the twenty-eighth, which is this Saturday. That flew. They're requesting fireworks, obviously, and a DJ. Their timeline is five to ten. And everybody here pretty much knows the deal. It's going to be over at the elementary school. And no parking, want to get this out there, no parking from the fire station all through town hall, and no parking one way on South Street and Hemlock Lane. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the live entertainment permit for the Halifax fireworks this weekend.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Yep. Okay. Ambulance abatements for FY twenty-one. Anybody want to put those out there?
Just read them out?
Yep.
Ambulance abatements FY twenty-one, one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred ninety, four hundred forty-one ninety cents.
You want to do all three of them there, Bill? Do all three, yeah.
April twenty-fifth, one hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-one, fifty-one cents. May twenty-five, one hundred and nine thousand, forty dollars and sixty-four cents.
All right, we have, so that's a motion to approve those three?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, do we want to get the, the bills paid here? Do we want to do the warrants and commitments? Go back up to those? You got them?
I move to affirm the following warrants. Payroll warrant number one thirteen for three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-one, fifty-five cents. Payroll warrant number one fifteen for nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three, thirty-eight cents. Vendor warrant number one sixteen for a hundred and eighty thousand, twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Withholding warrant number one seventeen for a hundred and ten dol, a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three, ninety-six cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move to approve the following warrant. Vendor warrant number one eighteen for a hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven, thirty-six cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the selectmen meeting minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. All right, moving down the list here. All right, we got some line item transfers, Cody. Could you explain those? We got highway legal budget and building maintenance.
Sure, so highway, the form was filled out incorrectly, so that's going to be on the next meeting. Building maintenance will also be on the next meeting, as we need to hold off. The, the one that's before you is for the legal budget. I, you may recall, I had mentioned at a previous meeting that our legal budget was going to go over this year, primarily driven by three main factors. The first is MBTA's community litigation that the board chose to file. So that's put us over by several thousand dollars, as that was unexpected. The other was the Morse Brothers litigation. You know, you may recall, there was an appeal process that we're going through. So that has cost the town some thousands of dollars. And then also, you know, some unexpected personnel costs as far as labor council. So we, when we put a budget together, we know there's going to be more labor costs if we're going to bargain contracts. So for instance, this coming year, we know we're going to be bargaining contracts, we increased our legal budget a little bit. We didn't anticipate bargaining contracts this year when we put the budget together, and then two new unions formed.
Formed.
And we had to bargain two contracts. Now, one of them decided against it, which was very odd, but we did still have to go through a bargain of contracts. So, you know, there's labor council costs involved there. So we're anticipating about thirty thousand dollars that we're going to need. The funds are coming from police wages, we, due to just retirement of some older officers and new officers coming in. We have an expected overage in that account, so the, the plan would be to take it out of police wages due to the overage and move it into the legal budget for thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, let me pull these up here, so I can get the wordage right. I always mess this one up.
So it would just be to approve the line item transfer in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from the police wages account into the legal budget.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the moving of thirty thousand dollars from the police budget to, um, legal budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, that was ugly. And then here, Cody, is that the nine thousand eight hundred ninety-three?
Nope, that's the form that was incorrectly filled out. So it's just the one legal budget. We're skipping the other ones for tonight.
Okay. All right, and then I jump down, we got to go back to K, I apologize. Town accountant has the authorized ARPA representative.
Yes, so with my anticipated departure and also when Sandy Nolan retired, we never had approved Lindsay Martinelli, our interim town accountant, to submit the ARPA requests. So there is, the county requires that in order for her to be an authorized signatory to submit the reports, that the board just approve, approve that. So it really just, it's just submitting the reports currently. I've been doing it, but it really should be with the accounting office.
Sure. How mu, what's the status with ARPA right now? I mean, is there?
So no, no, we had to fully obligated all those costs at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Sure.
So now it's just submitting reports on what the status of those are. So, you know, like we had the Water Department project, we allocated some money to Silver Lake, we have a couple other miscellaneous projects, just making sure that we're reporting.
So it's seeing them through to the finish line, essentially?
Just, yeah, just reporting.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to, um...
So the actual, sorry, the actual language would be that the town accountant is authorized to prepare and enter information into the Plymouth County Rescue Plan portal in support of one or more applications to Plymouth County for grants to be funded from a grant received by Plymouth County under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Can I so, can I so move that?
Yes.
So moved. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Cody. That was a mouthful.
The road cuts we actually are going to skip over, it ended up not being needed as it's in private property.
Okay, so we're skipping over M, jumping down to N, Use of Opioid Settlement Funds for Junior Police Academy. I love the sound of this.
Yeah, so we, we've received close to eighty thousand dollars in opioid settlement funds. You know, the Massachusetts Attorney General entered into litigation with all the pharmaceutical companies as a result of the opioid epidemic. That there, there's been settlements reached with several of those pharmaceutical companies. And the result is a lot of the funds get sent directly to the towns. We had a, we had an article on town meetings to kind of fix some budget, not budget, but accounting. And we actually have a survey out right now to gauge the public's interest on health and potential use of these opioid funds.
Great.
But we, we, we developed an internal team consisting of myself, our border health agent, Bob Bowery, our COA director, Darlene Reagan, police chief, deputy chief, fire chief, to just start brainstorming some ideas. And during that initial meeting, it was come, you know, it came up, the Halifax Police Department is putting on a junior academy this year, Junior Police Academy, for two days in August. And a lot of it is going to be focused on drug awareness for children in fifth and sixth grade. So it sounds like the perfect, perfect use of these funds. It's, it's small amount, two thousand dollars they're requesting. We have about eighty thousand. And the board will look to appropriate the rest at a future time, once we've had some more data gathering. But given kind of the pertinence of this, and it just seems like a great program. So the police department, in the, in the letter attached, is requesting that you appropriate two thousand dollars out of the opioid settlement funds for the purpose of their police academy, junior academy.
Cody, why not the whole week? Why just do it two days?
I think they're just starting out. So they had done this years ago, and then they'd stopped, and the county puts one on.
Yeah.
And there's been such overwhelming demand for the county one, that a large amount of Halifax students have actually been waitlisted at that one. So the thought was to start doing something here. It would probably look to be expanded in the future, but I think this is the first year where they're backed, so they wanted to start not, not too big with it.
We used to run one every year. We have the state police, we come with the dogma dogs, they come with the drug dogs, we'd have the helicopters land. And it's, when you post it, it would fill up. People are dying in this academy. They really, they have a big graduation ceremony at the end. It's really impressive.
Yeah. I'm excited to get that going here. That sounds fantastic. All right, I will gladly entertain a motion to use funding for Junior Police Academy from our opioid settlement funds.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, next up is our town administrator search committee charge.
Oh, yes, I'll let you take this one, Mr. Celia.
Yes, so as you know, we are looking for a new town administrator. We have Cody for another couple of weeks or so. So we have to start the process of finding Cody's replacement. And one of those things we will consider is putting together a, basically a screening committee to look at candidates. And what I was given by the consultant that is working with us is a charge. So essentially, anybody that will be on this committee essentially knows what's expected of them. You know, the rules of engagement, so to speak. Amongst them, and one of the, one of the most paramount things amongst it, is that secrecy has to be maintained. Because we will be receiving applications for folks that are currently working in other communities. So we want to make sure that if it doesn't work out, or if they decide to not take the job or something, so we need to make sure that we keep everything in-house. so we need to make sure that we keep everything in house. So that was kind of the overriding thing here. But it basically goes over, uh, what's expected of folks. Uh, and I wanted to make sure that the committee got their eyes on this, um, the board got their eyes on this so that we can kind of spell out what is expected of folks that want to do it.
So this, and just as a note, um, this just lays the groundwork, the expectations of the committee.
Mm-hmm.
Your typical committee charges that you approve have membership. I don't think you guys have decided that yet.
Correct.
Um, so you can certainly approve this, which is just the kind of direction. And then, eh, to Mr. Sealy's point, you can, we can post this because we're looking for candidate, for members to join this and at least then they know what they're actually looking to get into. Um, and then on your July eighth meeting, you can establish actual membership. Applications for the permanent position are due, I think, July?
July third.
Oh, is it the third?
Third.
Okay, so, um, you know, with the July eighth meeting, you'll definitely want to get that committee established because they're going to want to be meeting right, probably that week.
And in talking with, um, the consultant company that we're using, I know they're looking to, to kind of have their screenings mid-July. So that's another thing is availability. Uh, if folks do want to try to participate in this process, they have to make sure that they're available, uh, mid-July when they'll be doing their Zoom, uh, screening. So that's another part that we have to put into the mix. So does this need, uh, an approval, Cody, from the board or?
I would approve the committee charge.
Okay.
And I don't know if you have, if you've had any time to think about what you'd like the membership to be. I, I just, you don't certainly have to do that tonight, but you will need to do that on the eighth. And on the eighth, you will need to actually appoint members. Because you, they're going to need to meet that next week.
Sure.
Um, so if you've had this opportunity to think of what you'd like that membership to be, it might be a good chance. But again, if you have not, that's fine. Just know that you're going to need to do it on the eighth. On the eighth, um, what we'll do is any talent bank forms that we've received, we'll plan to have them in. And whether you want one of those people on the committee, whether you want three, you haven't decided. You can decide that, but, um, we'll need to move, do it all that night.
That night.
If that's what we're going to do.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do you guys want to try to hammer out, uh, the positions on this screening committee now? Or do you need more time to think about what you'd like to do and do it at the, uh, the July meeting?
I'm fine with either. The only thing I would say about the, um, the talent bank forms, is it, is it appropriate if we say up to so many people at large? Or is that?
I don't think we even need to.
We don't need to quantify the number of people that we pick from each category, correct?
No.
It's up to?
Yeah, no, you could, you could decide, you know, you could say, look, um, on the eighth, you, you could look at the applications and say, we have, um, five phenomenal at-large members and we think all of them will be great. We're going to put all five of them and a finance committee member and, uh, the town clerk and be done. You, you could have, um, three, uh, talent bank forums and say, look, we only want to put two at-large. It's totally your discretion. The only thing, and I think Bernie would probably, um, Bernie Lynch, the consultant, would say, you don't want to go too big.
Yeah, he likes it small.
You want to, you want to keep it somewhat small. You, you probably don't want to do, um, anyone that's going to report to this position, you know, because they'd be pick, essentially selecting potentially their own boss. Um, but you know, at-large members, finance committee, if you have any elected, um, positions in town, those can be considered. That, and those are just typical, you can do whatever you want, but.
Yes.
They're picking the chair, we're not picking the chair of the committee.
Yeah, they pick their own chair of the committee.
Yep.
Would it be smart where we don't know how many talent bank applications we've received or will receive? Would it be smart to postpone the position of the committee until the eighth?
Yeah, so, so the only thing I would recommend is, um, so what, what we can do on the eighth is everyone that has submitted, we'll have them in. And then just keep, just, um, if you as individuals have any, um, position or person in mind that you'd like, who's not an at-large member, let me know ahead of time so I can inquire with them. So for instance, if you, if you say, look, we'd really like the town clerk to serve on this.
Town clerk.
Let, let me know and I can check with Sue and say, are you interested? She may say, no, I haven't been interested.
I will say she did a great job in, um, subsequent meetings that we had, um, search screening committees that we did. So I would, I would love to have our town clerk on there and a member of FinCom on there as well. We can let finance committee.
So that's another thing, right? Finance, finance committee meets on the seventh, so you, if you do want a finance committee member.
Yes.
It'd be good to know and then they can choose their member.
Yeah.
Um, and then as far as at-large, leave it open. You can come back and you, and you can decide on the eighth.
Is the board comfortable with, uh, having our town clerk and a member of, of FinCom on the screening committee? I think that's, you know, pretty reasonable to put those two on there.
I would say it'd be good to five people.
Yeah, I mean, we could do those two and then three citizens at large. Um, if we wanted to do something like that. Or to Cody's point, we could wait to see what we get for talent bank forums and go from there.
Yeah, I think there have been, uh, I would encourage all people to submit those talent bank forms. I know there's a lot of open positions in town. I don't know, the numbers updated today, but I'm not sure that we've had a.
Damn, have we gotten any?
Robust interest.
Administrator, screening committee?
Two and, um, I, I actually, three guys.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Everyone's very critical of me and the town administrator though, so.
There should be plenty.
It's a good opportunity for the residents to get involved and, you know, they're not going to select the candidate.
Right.
But they're involved in bringing finalists forward.
No, it's huge.
And so you, you can't complain if you don't, you know, you have an opportunity and you don't take that opportunity.
Eh, preach, preach. All right, so, um, Cody, why don't you extend the invitation to the town clerk?
Mm-hmm.
And let FinCom know we'd love a member.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll see what we get for our talent bank forms.
Excellent.
And then do we need to officially approve the charge?
Um, no, i- i- if that's your plan, what you can do is on the eighth, um, I will plan to have a, a version that includes membership in it.
Okay.
Include the town clerk, finance committee, and then I'll leave blank X members at large.
Okay.
And then I'll fill it in once you've decided and then you can approve that charge right at that meeting.
Okay.
They're over there, it's very clear. Um, and but we'll, as long as you're, and agree with this, we'll post it so people know what, what it is.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Awesome, thank you. All right, let's go down to P, memorandum of agreement executive assistant to board town administrator.
Uh, yeah, so this is a memorandum of agreement between the town and, um, Pam McSherry, the executive assistant. Um, it basically outlines Pam is going to begin taking on several, um, personnel duties. You may per- recall, I mentioned previously that Pam took a, um, course, um, by the Massa- Massachusetts Municipal Association, um, in personnel and human resources. It was a rigorous course, um, and she's learned a lot since then. Um, I've had Pam involved in several of our kind of personnel functions. You've heard me mention that we recently implemented a, um, HR and personnel system called Bamboo HR and it's really streamlined our HR process and, and I think you can, um, if, if anyone's looking for a job in town or you apply, the difference from what used to take place to what takes place now is night and day. But, um, the idea is for Pam to take on these duties within her current role and give her a small stipend. Um, and, you know, allow for the town to be exposed to less risk and make sure we're compliant with the law.
Yeah, I think, I think those things, I mean, I've been a selectman, I'm going on, what, four years? And, and that HR component has sorely been lacking for a long time and I think we've made great strides. Um, and I think this is a, a move that makes sense essentially, especially, excuse me, where you're, um, you know, going to be moving on. I think it'll help transition things and streamline things a little bit, so, uh, I'm all for it. The board have any comments or anything? No? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, uh, with executive assistant Pam McSherry, um, to the board. Um, and it's effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimous. Thanks Pam for taking that on.
Good luck.
Yes. All right, so we're got now the big long part here on the agenda. We have all these reappointments. Um, so I think just in the essence of time and efficiency, I think the best way to go through this is I will read through all of these positions. Um, if anybody has any sort of hold or wants to, you know, circle back to a reappointment, just let us know and we can circle back. Otherwise, we'll then appoint, uh, all the folks that don't have any sort of holds, okay? You guys ready?
Yes.
Ready to rock and roll? All right. So, uh, I will, um, entertain a motion to approve the following folks for reappointments. Beautification committee, one year, Shirley Graff, Wendy Greco, Christina Palmer, Cassandra Doyle Wadden. Cable TV advisory committee, one year, Janice Hayward, John Chavone. Cemetery superintendent and burial agent, R. Stephen Hayward. Conservation commission, Alan Diaz, Kathy Evans.
Hold.
Okay. Uh, and that is Alan or Kathy?
Alan.
Alan, okay. Uh, council on aging, three years, Frederick Corrigan. Halifax Emergency Management Agency Director, Michael Witham. Halifax Emergency Management Agency Deputy Director, Jao Chavez. Historian, one year, Susan, Susan Basile. Historic District Commission, three years, John Shay, Kevin Shay. Historical Commission, three years, John Shay. Holidays in Halifax, one year, Tanya Massa, Kimberly Campbell.
Hold.
Uh.
Kimberly.
Kimberly, okay. Uh, licensing authority agents, uh, Chief Jao Chavez, Deputy.
Joanne Chavez.
How you say it?
Joanne Chavez.
Stop it. All right, or Chief Chavez? All right, how's that? Chief Chavez, geez.
Or John.
Or John, either one. Sorry, chief, I'm going to get pulled, I'm going to get pulled over. Deputy chief, Ted Benner. Officer Michael Bonkarowski. Officer Paul Campbell. Sergeant William Capriel. Officer Daniel Chahin. Officer Joseph Cushman. Officer Patrick DeRue. Officer William Feltrip. Officer William Maloney. Sergeant Robert McDonald. Officer Michelle McEntire. Officer Steven Raditz. Sergeant Michael W. Schleif. Officer Ryan Simpson. Next page. Municipal and school building committee, three years, Robert Gaynor. Thomas Milius. Parking clerk, one year, Linda McCarthy. Pay, uh, police matron, excuse me, one year, Janice M. Hayward. Susan Lawless. Tina Olivera and Antoinette Ross. Special police officers, Jay Guittaboni. Albert Hinkst. Patrick Sterling, that's for one year. Sealer of weights and measures, one year, David Moore. Sealer of weights and measures, traffic enforcement assistant, one year, Richard Eldridge. Town council, one year, Brooks and Durensis. Town director of county cooperative extension services, one year, Kazaya Nazarella. Veterans agent, veteran service officer and veterans burial agent, one year, Stephen Littlefield. Veterans agent assistants, one year, Sean Goyette and Robert Mullin. Veteran service committee, one year, Stephen Littlefield, Sean Goyette, Robert Mullin, R. Stephen Hayward, Mark Chetwin and Mary Gravenese. Wiring inspector, one year, Stephen Peterson. Wiring inspector assistant, one year, Dennis McManus. Zoning board of appeals, five years, Gerald Joy. Zoning board of appeals associate, five years, David Fryer. So I'll entertain a motion to approve all those without a hold?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimous. All right, now we'll go back to the holds. The first hold here, uh, conservation commission was for Alan Diaz.
So I just, yeah, I just have a couple of, uh, concerns, I guess. Um, there was a, there's been a few projects in town that the conservation committee's been a part of or, you know, the processes involve them. Um, where it's, it seems to me that we've gotten a little off the beaten path and not so much following the bylaws, but interjecting some opinions to the point where legal council's gotten involved a few times. Um, there was a bond issue on Palmer Mill, uh, that seemed arbitrary. Um, there's been others, um, and I'm just wondering, um, given the totality of the picture, um, if three years on this commission is appropriate at this time.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I struggled with this one too. Um, I consider Alan a, a good friend, but that should have nothing to do with the town stuff. And again, I, I voted against Alan the last time out. Um, and as hard as it is for me, I, I think I will stay with that vote, uh, this year. Uh, and again, it's a, it's a tough decision. It's one I've literally lost sleep over. Um, but I think it's, it's the right course of action here. So, um, do I entertain a motion here or do we just not, not reappoint Cody or what's the?
No, there's no motion, just the appointment expires.
Okay.
Um, so the appointment, it was going to do, I think, June thirtieth, so the appointment just expires on June thirtieth. You don't need to take any other action.
Okay. There's that. All right, and then there was one more, was there one more guys? Help me out here.
Uh, yeah, I just had a question about the holidays in Halifax.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Kimberly Campbell.
I just, I guess a clarification question, is, is this the same, uh, candidate or same, uh, woman who we had questions about the address? And is that been solved?
No, you're thinking of, are you thinking of a different? Kim King.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, Kimberly Campbell owns Ravenbrook Farm.
Then I withdraw.
Totally, yeah.
Got it.
All right, so then I guess I'll entertain a motion to appoint Kimberly Campbell to the holidays in Halifax, uh, committee for one year.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Sorry, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're in favor of that, Bill?
Yes, yes.
All right, opposed, unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's quite all right. Uh, old business, town administrator update, Cody?
Uh, yes, so, uh, a few things. First, a, a big shout out to, um, Chief Witham and the fire department today.
That was awesome.
As you all know, it was a hundred degrees out today, one of the hottest days of the year. Um, and the chief and the, the team over there set up the ladder truck over at the elementary school and, uh, sprayed water for probably close to an hour, so, so the kids could all cool off. And, um, overwhelming the amount of people over there. There, there were probably fifty to a hundred kids at least.
Yeah.
Um, enjoying the water, so, you know, just wanted to thank them. Uh, as you mentioned, the town administrator recruitment is underway. Um, the interim town administrator recruitment is also underway. So applications, um, were due this morning. Um, with that, my thought would be to, um, schedule a special meeting next week if the board is willing to do that.
Sure.
To interview, um, the, uh, candidates that, you know, the, um, the chairman, um, has reviewed and feel, you know, that meet the qualifications. Um, so at this point, I believe, two, Mr. Sealy?
Yeah, I think we have two. And I will say, um, it was encouraging because compared to the process before you got here, Cody, I do think we have some candidates that are very qualified to be, not, I mean, they'd be qualified to be a, a long-term TA. But for interim, uh, we have folks that have, have done the job, that know what, you know, that are very competent and should be very, very capable of steering the ship until we can find a full-term one. So, uh, I'm excited that we have two quality guy, you know, quality candidates coming in next week. And I hope the board, we can figure out a time that works to do a special next week and bring them in.
Is there a day that does not work next week? So obviously we have the fourth on Friday. Um, let's see, is, yeah, just.
Here it is. Do you want to shoot for, I mean, I, I get in the Tuesday thing. Do you want to shoot for the first, Tuesday the first? Keep it a Tuesday?
I have a very busy schedule.
Man of leisure over there.
Think I'm okay?
Think you're, oh, you're okay.
What, uh, do you want, six PM? You want to do an hour for each candidate?
Yeah, yep.
So six PM.
Six to eight. Yeah, six to eight on Tuesday, July first.
Okay, we'll reach out to the two candidates and, um, and look to have.
See if they're available. See if they're available. Do we want to have a, a second date, in case one of the candidates isn't available, or just play it by ear?
Um, I mean, if the board, is the board available Wednesday evening?
You guys want to go Tuesday with a rain date of Wednesday, in case they're not available?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll shoot for Tuesday.
Prefer Tuesday, but we'll accept Wednesday if we have to.
So we'll, we'll, I'll let you know, we'll let you know what the process is there. As far as other items, we, the board of trustees interviewed a finalist for the library director position last evening.
Awesome.
And they voted unanimously to move forward with that candidate. So Pam is conducting the background reference checks of that person, and hopefully that will look to get them on board in mid-July. We've also extended an offer for the assistant town accountant position. And we've extended an offer for the administrative assistant in the board of assessors office. So we're actually ramping right back up, kind of, to at least all the positions that have been approved, to having those filled. Our new HR system has gone live for all of town hall employees. We're launching for counsel on aging and library later this week. And we've heard nothing but really good things with that and that process. And just working on closing out the end of the fiscal year. And, you know, some line item transfers, and preparing to open up the budget for fiscal twenty-six.
Awesome. I know, I know, you know, building inspector's a big one too, do we have any headway on that position?
Yeah, so I, I believe you and I had spoke about this, but the, my thought was, you know, a building commissioner, any department level position is really key. And my thought is, I don't think it would be fair for me to be involved in that process at this point. I think that the next town administrator should be involved in deciding who the next building commissioner would be. So internally, I think it's best to, you know, we'll continue advertising for that, but you put that on hold. And once you have a permanent town administrator, let them actively recruit for a building commissioner. You may recall, I, we, I brought in Mr. Braga, Joe Braga, who's done a phenomenal job.
He's awesome.
And, and I confirmed with Mr. Braga that he is dedicated to the town of Halifax, and he will stick around as long as you guys need him. So, you know, he, he told me he would at least be confident staying here through the end of the calendar year.
Oh, fantastic.
And so that's why I think it, it makes sense to, if you can hold off, you know, try not to make any big decisions without the next town administrator there, and that's a, I think, an example of one of them.
Great idea. All right, anything else from the town administrator?
Uh, no, and then, and I have no new updates on the MBTA zoning.
Okay. Anything else on the board? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimous, thank you. Thanks, guys, thanks for coming.